Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oshkosh Common Council August 24th meeting. Please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Here.
Hansen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Borja Holski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Present seven.
Councilmember Muggerauer will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening, we have a presentation by Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated Midyear Report.
Thank you. I'm going to take that off, sorry. Thank you, Council, thank you, City Manager, and welcome Kelly Nyford as Community Development Director. My name is Pamela Ruder. I am the Executive Director of Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. We've got a slide presentation. You've been given a midyear report in writing as well. Can you go one word, click, we'll get... There we are. I am the Executive Director of Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, and there is some information going out there, so we will address it right away. I am retiring as of October 31st. Yay for me! And really, really good news for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods is we have a replacement for our Executive Director position. Longtime board member Tom Fodick will be taking over as Executive Director. So I feel really good. The organization is going to be in great hands, and we're going to continue to do great things here in Oshkosh. So, our midyear report, we can go to the next slide. We do work with the Board of Directors as 501(c)(3). They are very involved, definitely a working board on different committees. They help to develop new partnerships as we look to strengthen Oshkosh Neighborhoods. We presently have 19 recognized neighborhood associations. We...Oshkosh does it very different as far as empowering those residents to be leaders. They are the ones that come to us, help, and ask for help to have that neighborhood association developed. We meet with leaders in the neighborhood associations on a monthly basis with the alliance meeting. This gives them a forum to exchange ideas and really focus on what they want to do in their neighborhood association. Cora Strand is our neighborhood coordinator. She works with core teams on their community building and engagement needs. It is, again, a process very unique to each neighborhood association. Really good news, there's a couple new neighborhoods hoping to develop yet this fall. Just north of Congress Field has an upcoming meeting, another one downtown, and then we're working with the group on Sixth and Michigan Avenue to hopefully organize yet this year. Next slide. Our community outreach coordinator is Steph Carlin. She has helped bridge the communication gap during the social distancing of the pandemic. We've developed this Hey Neighbor publication. It's published monthly. It's designed to help our neighborhoods stay informed. We also initiated Feeling Good in the Neighborhood, a monthly livestream showcasing one of our neighborhood associations. We've grown our social media platform immensely on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Please follow or like us if you haven't seen us yet, and we are always updating our website. Next slide, please. One of our partnerships that has blossomed is this Connect Through Tech program that we collaborate with the Oshkosh Senior Center to keep older adults connected and out of isolation. This could not have come at a better time. It has been extremely well received with over 250 participants already. We're constantly evolving that program. We're looking at how to use or offer different classes such as how to use QR codes, and there are many, many success stories to share. Next slide, please. Another partnership that we are engaged with is Rock the Block Oshkosh. This is our neighborhood revitalization partnership with Habitat for Humanity, obviously us, Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, and the city of Oshkosh brought this unique program. It's a Rock the Block Oshkosh. We went to our third neighborhood association in 2021 in June. We were at the River East Neighborhood, and we had 98 volunteers working on different days on 83 different projects. There were 21 properties that had signed up and submitted that application and recorded over 400 volunteer hours. Copper Hole in River East was a wonderful host and a home base for us. We sent people out to do a wide variety of curb appeal projects such as power washing, edging, and various landscaping. Next slide, please. These partnerships are very instrumental to our work within our neighborhood associations. Stephen Wiley and Brendan Nielsen from the City Planning Division have compiled the score sheet. We'll be reporting back on those results, but very hopeful and optimistic that we'll have similar results that we saw in Sacred Heart back in 2019. So, we're pleased to coordinate also with the Rock the Block Oshkosh The Born Learning Trail Revival. It's in Row Park, which is right next to downtown Y. Amcor was a financial partner for us on that, and they sent volunteers. We worked with the Parks Department, installed the new signs, and also then they helped prepare the trail for painting. We're a public-private entity. We recognize the value of that engagement in our community. We record the volunteer hours, we track them, and we have a total dollar value. My midyear report offers that as a quarterly number. I don't think it's in there yet, but our community investment at the end of June was already $60,510 with volunteer hours. Next slide, please. This one's very fun. We belong to a national organization called NUSA, Neighborhoods USA. In February, we submitted nomination for Neighborhood of the Year, and we submitted Congress Field Neighborhood Association for the 2020 Rock the Block Oshkosh Neighborhood Revitalization. At the May National Conference, held virtually, it was announced that they received first place in the multi-neighborhood project partnership division. Click one more time. After they were the divisional winner, they were also named National Neighborhood of the Year. So they won the grand prize for this partnership that we were able to complete during a pandemic, which we beat out teams from lots of places, but obviously, we were very excited to have that national recognition. Next slide, please. Another project we have going, this is with a generous gift from the Oshkosh County Community Foundation and additional support from the city of Oshkosh. We are offering this three-year program, our Good Neighbor Grant. We will reimburse up to $750 for curb appeal projects in neighborhood associations. Initially, we were funded enough to offer 20 grants each of the three years through 2022. We're excited to announce that we received additional funding from the Johnny Kinzel Foundation, and we can offer additional grants this year and next year. Our grants and foundation dollars that we have raised are at about $55,000 through midyear. Next slide, please. Block Party Trailer was one that we've been promoting. Pandemic slowed it down just a little tad, but we had it in Fourth of July Parade at the farmer's market. We were out during National Night Out, so many of you there as well. And we have a couple neighborhoods that have submitted a reservation. Our goal is to make it easy to have neighborhood block parties where neighbors can get to know neighbors. Next slide. We've been out in the community doing community presentations, whether it's virtual or in person, going to the farmer's market. We continue to inform people and make them aware. Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods is here to help strengthen their neighborhoods. We've seen tremendous growth and interest in our events. One more click. We were ecstatic with the June Rock the Block Oshkosh, July Neighborhood Night at the Leech. As always, the second...or the first Tuesday in August is National Neighborhood Night Out, and in September, we'll be recognizing National Good Neighbor Day. It's always September 28th. We're going to have a competition to see how many people can be nominated as the best or a good neighbor. So we'll stay tuned for that. We'll be accepting nominations beginning of September. One more click. Those partnerships are very important to us. We go out and try and, again, get neighborhood revitalization done in our neighborhoods through different collaborations. We've continued to grow these over the year, and hopefully, we can get through a pandemic and not have to social distance again, but...because we are all about social connectedness, so it has been challenging, but our staff and our board has responded. I will open it up for questions. We look forward to working with Kelly and Mark Lyons in the Community Development and Planning Division. We do miss Alan Davis. He was a thinker as far as what neighborhoods can be in Oshkosh, and we believe that we've only touched the surface. We continue to grow, but we'll continue to work to strengthen neighborhoods. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I don't want to glance over it. Congress Field.
I know.
That's fantastic. That should be celebrated. And so, you know, praise doesn't always, you know, doesn't always come fast, but to you, to the organization, and all the way down to the whole neighborhood, that's awesome, that that part of this community with that partnership was able to achieve that. So congrats to you and everybody who did that.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congrats.
And good luck in your next chapter. All right, next we have a public hearing. Ordinance 21409. Approve Final Resolution for Partial Right-of-Way Vacation of Wilson Avenue East of Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
All right. And a second reading. Approve Final Resolution for Partial Right-of-Way Vacation of Wilson Avenue East of Algoma Boulevard. Second call for comment. And third reading, final reading. Approve Final Resolution for Partial Right-of-Way Vacation of Wilson Avenue East of Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Borja Holski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Present seven.
All right, we will move on to citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address council only. Statements are limited to five minutes and must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda and are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting. Must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Do we have folks registered for citizen statements?
No, we do not.
All right, how about public comment on agenda items?
Yes, we do. We have several. Our first citizen is going to speak to item number 19, which is Resolution 21423, Kathy Webb, and then Tess Alvarez.
All right. Yes, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. Welcome.
Kathy Webb, 543 Otter Ave., and I am here representing River East Neighborhood. We are requesting funds to...
Madam Mayor, microphone. Can we get you the...
Yeah, there we go. We are requesting funds to put up a gazebo in Riverside Park. At one time, there was two gazebos, but this year, we're just asking for one, and we are hoping that it can be put up near the convention center so that it can be used for their weddings. But we would like to be able to use it for our Neighborhood Night Out and just for our neighbors and anybody else that likes to use that park. That would be available for shade, and I know I've talked to Ray Mauer, and there's many different designs, and it's something that, he said, the Parks Department would be able to install, so it's not going to be this fancy one like we're putting in William Waters Plaza, but something that would just be nice that people could enjoy the summer months, and then the convention center would be able to have for their weddings and different events that they have. So that is all I've got.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor?
Yes.
Over here. I'm going to call all the individuals that want to speak to item number 19 first. We'll do it in that order so that we can stay on topic. So the next one is going to be Emily Richison, and then Victoria Shore.
Emily, please come forward. Is Emily Richison here? All right, perhaps she'll show up later.
Then Victoria Shore?
Victoria Shore. Third and final call for Victoria Shore. Okay.
Then we'll move on to item number 43, Ordinance 21447, and that's Tess Alvarez.
Tess Alvarez, please step forward.
Madam Mayor, while all this person's coming up...oh, please come up. It sounds like we're having some technical difficulties, people hearing, so if you've called anybody online, they may not hear you, so we're trying to get that worked out as we speak, so...
Okay, so the folks on the virtual do not have audio.
The WebEx, they're having a trouble hearing, so I just want to point that out. So we may have some people that want to participate, and we'll get to them as soon as we can.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tess Alvarez, 2061 Richards Avenue, Oshkosh, Wisconsin, 54904. And I'm here to let you know I think it's important we lower the fine for simple marijuana possession from $200 to $75. I find it dangerous to lump marijuana with other hard drugs and more serious high-dollar-fined crimes. I grew up in Oshkosh. I currently live in Oshkosh, where I work and raise a family. I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I'm a proud Badger. I love the state of Wisconsin and specifically this area. Growing up in Oshkosh, I always got good grades, was involved in sports, extracurricular activities. I won the deer essay in elementary school, just always cared about doing the right thing. As I grew, I started to notice a large disconnect regarding marijuana. I found that parents' friends, friends' parents, prominent people in our town who are successful, happy, healthy, contributing members in our society were using marijuana. And this was a very big difference from what I was being taught. As I continued to get older, I started experimenting myself, like most kids do. I started with cigarettes, went to alcohol, and then to marijuana, to realize that marijuana wasn't that bad, surely, in my opinion, not as bad as alcohol. Since marijuana was lumped with these other hard drugs, I figured, like marijuana, they weren't that bad either. So I tried ecstasy, I tried cocaine, I tried heroin, to realize that these other drugs were terrible, very terrible. I later became addicted to opiates. I was fortunate enough to put myself into rehab to get counseling and to stay clean, but I had countless other friends, all raised in this community, who were not so lucky. They died from drug overdoses, and they died from suicide largely due to these drug addictions. Many of these young adults you may also know or have heard of, and this is the exact reason why I find it so important to stop lumping marijuana with these other hard drugs and these other more serious high-dollar-fined crimes. I think it's misleading, and again, dangerous, to our citizens and, most importantly, to our youth. Just like me, when they try marijuana and they realize that it's not so bad, they try other really terrible, life-altering addictive drugs that ruin lives. I believe a part of the puzzle of the many lives I saw being taken to drugs would have been helped had they been told the truth. Also, with today's research, we know that marijuana has medicinal benefits. When I was about 18 years old, I watched a close friend from this community, who was smart, who was driven, loved, and an involved young adult, pass away from cancer. The thing that helped them mentally and physically process the fact that they were losing their life at such a young age was marijuana. Again, another very large disconnect from what I was being taught, and I'm still very affected by this all today. These are only a few ways you can believe that marijuana prohibition has affected me, and I know there are so many others out there who have been affected so much more than I have been. I urge you to see the importance of this issue in our community and in our state to keep our citizens and our youth safe and to send a message of truth, at the very least, that marijuana should be treated like alcohol. Open up these conversations with people you respect, you love, and know this is going on in so many more ways than you may even realize. And if it's not affecting you, like it is me, it probably is to other people close to you if you open up those conversations. I'm here in this community, and I'm open to continue this conversation and/or answer any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
TJ Hobbs, and then Cindy Kerwin?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Excuse me. Good evening, Council. My name is TJ Hobbs. There we go. I am here today to propose...excuse me, my address first. So I live at 136 High Ave. in Oshkosh, Unit C, 54901. I'm a college graduate of UW-Oshkosh, and I am happy to be back in the city, living with my husband, who's at home watching our dog, so I could be here today. So thank you to him. Council, I am here today to propose that the city of Oshkosh change its marijuana fine policy from $200 for possession of marijuana to $1 for possession of marijuana, as well as confiscation of that marijuana. Now, that is not an original idea. That is what the city of Madison is currently operating on, and it's working really well for them. This also would include eliminating court costs and criminal charges for the possession of marijuana, because I'm sure you all don't need me to read the Saps, but I have them here. We all know alcohol kills more people per year, and opioids kill more people per year as well in Wisconsin. Approximately 2,000 to 3,000 per deaths...or, excuse me, 2,000 to 3,000 deaths per year annually attributed to alcohol. Well, there's about 750 opioid overdose deaths per year in Wisconsin. Conversely, there are no deaths to report in Wisconsin attributed to the use of marijuana. I'm here as a citizen wondering why the least lethal drug of the three is the one that's currently banned and fined in our city. Our city of Oshkosh and our state continues to lose forward-thinking individuals in forward-thinking industries while we claim "forward" as our state motto. Tonight, we have the opportunity to modernize our city's policies regarding possession of a drug less deadly than legal drugs sold and taxed right now at our local bars, restaurants, and pharmacies. And the reduction of this fine from $200 to $1 is a way that we can help make Oshkosh more livable for its residents while taking a necessary step to modernize our city and ourselves in preparation for what's naturally happening and what's coming next, which is statewide marijuana legalization and taxation to pay for social services in Oshkosh and across Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered?
Yes, we do. For number 43, we have Cindy Kerwin.
Cindy? Welcome. You might need to adjust the mic there for you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cindy Kerwin. I've been here before, not in this place. I represent Decriminalize Oshkosh. Back a few years, and we've done this many years with many help from many people, trying to have people understand that this is a medicine also. Yes, anybody can misuse things, but I'm here to say, our state is losing so much money. You have no idea how much money is just being lost by everybody going because every single state around us is legal. I'm 62 years old. I've been watching marijuana, alcohol, opiates. This last...this Sunday, I was at a memorial for a friend that just died from another opiate. We couldn't have his funeral last year. They just...everybody's going crazy because they're being locked down. Yes, there's a lot of people doing alcohol, but alcohol, people get a little crazy. Opiates, they get crazy, and all there's...please, please, please, understand. This is also a medicine. In all these different circles, we've had so many people dying from cancer and all these other ailments. I will go to other states and find different things to help these people that I'm watching die. I have family members dying. My brother now has cancer. My mother's had cancer. My father died of cancer. I'm sure everybody that you know, somebody has died of cancer. This is a medicine. I, this last year, had COVID. I had it for four months. I was so sick, I was in the hospital five times, three times to the ER. The only thing that helped me was edibles. I couldn't keep anything down. They gave me 22 pills. I didn't even take any pills before that. If it wasn't for that, I would have never survived it. I begged people to drive over me. I was in so much pain. This is no joke. Would I take alcohol? No way. I'd be sicker than a dog. I'm already sick in the bathroom. This is medicine. For us to even find somebody for taking medicine, and then we've got people pushing drugs that are pills. 22 pills they had me on. 22, I couldn't even keep them down. I was in the bathroom when I wasn't even in the bathroom before. I lost them at some of my teeth. If it wasn't for having cannabis, I think I would have killed myself, and I understand why some people do. I'm older. I have watched since 14 years old, had people that were dealers, and I didn't understand, oh, because they have connections, they didn't get caught? But it doesn't matter. This is something that almost everybody...I stood on corners. I stood, I walked down roads to get over 6,000 signatures with our friends to get this fine down. I stayed until 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning at gas stations because I knew people would come out of the bars. To get that down, the fine, this is not...yes, you can abuse it, you can abuse it... To get that down, the fine, this is not, yes, you can abuse it, you can abuse anything. I haven't taken heroin, I haven't done all these crazy opiates, but I'm watching everybody dying from them. Please, bring that fine down. This is not something that, I mean, there's so many evil people out there doing evil things. Please, catch them. I'm not an evil person and I know a lot of people that are not. Please, bring it legal here someday so we can get the money for our state. I cannot tell you how many people are going out of state and buying because it's legal. We feel like we're like locked down and like, it's ridiculous. I'm 62 years old. This is ridiculous. Before I die, and I almost did, I want to see this legal. I don't want to see any fines. Start making money. Make our money. Make Forward, Wisconsin Forward. Wisconsin was the biggest grower in hemp.
Just wrap up your comments, please. We're at five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. I just had to come here. I'd just seen this and, like I said, I've got way more than 6,000 people behind me in Oshkosh. And we know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 45, Resolution 21449. Our first individual is Michelle Deppa and then Daryl McGill.
Hi. I'm going to just have, the next person I believe is Allison Stromsky. She should be on there as well. She's my daughter. We both live at 1883 Preserve Drive, Oshkosh, 54904. And we are going to be speaking to the proposal of a walking path going from our neighborhood, which is a new development Preserve Drive, connecting up to the trail system that is part of the Sawyer Creek system that's behind Trager School. My biggest concern, living where we're living right now, is that there is no sidewalk. And we are on 20th Street. Anyone that's been out there knows that that can be a very, very busy and very dangerous area. So if we decide we want to go for a bike ride or walk our dog or go for a walk, there is a section of the road that we have to literally walk on the road. Part of it is immensely overgrown, so there are times when it is two lanes, you have traffic coming at you, they don't get over and you have to literally jump into overgrowth. So, consideration of a, of a path being formed would be great. There is also a assisted living community that is adjacent to our neighborhood that I think that this would benefit them. It would give them an opportunity to go ahead and have a place to walk as well, that would be safe, out of traffic. Otherwise, they are kind of isolated without any sidewalks. Thank you for your time and now my daughter would like to speak.
Hello. My name is Allison Stromsky. I'm 12 years old and a member of the cross-country running team at Lord's Academy. Being part of the team means that I run a lot, but the only way to get to my running trail is through 20th Street, which you may know to be a very busy street because of its location near school and the YMCA. The street has very little sidewalks, which means I'm stuck running on the road face-to-face with cars. And you may be thinking that I could just run through the grass, but the lot is currently overgrown with lots of dead plants where someone could easily trip and break their ankle. So with a path, many people would be able to benefit from a place to bike, run, and walk their dogs. Meanwhile, my mom won't have to worry about me as I am on my run. Sometimes I like to go out on a run or walk my dog a little later in the day. So as the sun starts to set, it becomes more dangerous because the glare of the sun can interfere with drivers being able to see pedestrians. If we have a path, I would feel safer running because whenever I'm running on the road, there was always a feeling of anxiety, which is strange because usually running is supposed to get rid of stress and anxiety. So if we had a path, we would be able to avoid potential accidents. And with people texting these days, running on the street is not as safe as running on paths or sidewalks. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Daryl McGill?
Daryl? Yes. Please step forward. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a 2000 graduate, 2007 graduate of Leadership Oshkosh. I live in Oshkosh. I live in a new community, a fairly young community out at the Sawyer Creek Preserve. It's a community that was recently ideated and put together by Chet Wiesenberg and it is a neighborhood that's going to consist of 23 homes. I currently represent this community as the chairman of the HOA in this area. I have a great interest in, in advocating for the members of our community and having a good recreation solution for them other than just walking on the road. When we bought into the neighborhood, Chet proposed that there would be a walking path available to the neighbors in this area. And I understand prior to this meeting that there is capital improvement funds earmarked for the year 2023 as an extension to the Roost Park Trail Network. However, because of some of the safety concerns and one of whom you heard from this evening, I, I am also concerned about the safety of the people who live here. And I'm just asking that in lieu of any additional funding that the city has, we would certainly appreciate your consideration to provide us with that extension as soon as possible. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, I'm sorry. 1841 Preserve Drive, Oshkosh, Wisconsin, 54904.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford has a question.
Well, I also have a map here of a neighborhood that represents the people that live in our community. Can I leave this here with you?
You can register with the clerk over here.
Great. Thank you.
One moment though. Mr. Councilmember Ford has a question.
And you may not know the answer to this, but looking at the CIP, the, so the 2023 funds you're talking about, that's the $200,000. So this, what you want, the extension you want is not, would be in addition to that funding, is that correct? That's not included in that project?
No. That, that is just the funding for, that is earmarked.
Okay. So you're hoping to get the project moved up here?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 46, Resolution 21450. Jim Fokes and then John Kinnear?
Jim Fokes. And please state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Jim Fox. I'm representing Oshkosh Area Schools. My address is 1405 South Main Street, Oshkosh. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Oshkosh Area Schools, Resolution 46, for the planning overlay. Oshkosh Area Schools would like to further develop their existing athletic turf field, natural turf field at the site of the current high school. It's currently a soccer field. We would like to transform that field into a synthetic turf field. In order to do that, we need a planning overlay that will allow lighting, to allow our athletes to play later, earlier in the spring, as well as the fall months. This is, this is a field that will continue to host the same type of athletic activities that it is currently hosted, mainly freshmen, JV, soccer, and football. It'll also serve as a, as a great place for our training in the summertime, strength and conditioning camps. We are losing a crucial athletic field that we use for overflow activities on Jackson Street, which is the site of our new middle school construction, which will be occurring next year. So this field becomes very critical within our athletics program. And I'm here to show support and answer any questions that you may have relative to this project. With me tonight is John here with Retlow Association. He will answer any questions as well.
Do councilmembers have questions at this point?
I, I do have one, Mr. Fox, since you're here. And that is, I was watching the plan commission meeting today and I think there was a question about whether or not there was a net and a fence kind of doubling up. And I, I believe they said yes. So are they one in front of the other or part fence and at the top, part net? Because I didn't quite understand the answer listening to that.
Right. Great question. So the, it'll be both. There'll be net on either side of the turf field, 30 feet tall, to stop soccer balls from leaving, or footballs from leaving that field. Where the baseball field and the turf field meet, you'll have a woven mesh fence, but then on the other side of that will be a net. So there, there, does that make sense? There's two different systems, but they'll be back-to-back. One really serving the baseball field as the outfield fence, but then the net will be a 30-foot-tall field whereas the fence is, is it 8 feet, John? The baseball field fence? I'm sorry. Baseball field fence is 12 feet. The net would be 30 feet.
I just, I, I think one of the plan commission members had asked why there might be a need
So the, both fences, the combination on the north side where baseball and the proposed synthetic turf field meet, we have the hard mesh fence for a boundary for establishing home runs, creating an out-of-field play for the baseball field. And then the netting itself, and this is a black vinyl coated fencing as well that we're looking at using. From there above, that's going to create a backstop to catch home run balls and to stop soccer and footballs from passing onto the, onto the baseball field. So we use that combination of fencing for playability in both baseball and the multi-sport facility to the south, the proposed synthetic field.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Name, John Kinnear. N2455 East Minor in Wapaka with Retlow Corporation.
Do other councilmembers have any questions? All right. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, we're going to go back to item number 19, Resolution 21423. We have Emily Richardson and Victoria Shorsey here.
All right. Emily first and then Victoria. Oh, okay. So we have Victoria first. Okay, Vicky.
I asked my mother once why she, why she didn't name me Victoria and she said, well, they'll call you Vicky anyway. Good evening and thank you for your support of Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. We really appreciate it. I am Vicky Shorsey, 1224 Algoma Boulevard and president of the Sawyer Payne Neighborhood Association. SPNA is comprised of the Algoma Boulevard Historic District and surrounding area. In large part, it includes several churches and a synagogue, the Oshkosh Public Museum, Payne Art Center, and a significant and growing number of rental houses and apartments. It's kind of an interesting situation. Brad Larson, Director of the Oshkosh Public Museum and Marketing Coordinator, Tammy Maluski have actively participated in planning for this project, as evidenced by Brad's letter of support provided with our Great Neighborhoods application. Tammy is also an active member of the SPNA leadership team. SPNA Treasurer and Project Leader Emily Richardson will now recap the project for your consideration and we do appreciate your consideration of it. Please let us know if you have any questions and thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. And please state your name and address also.
Thank you. My name is Emily Richardson. I live at 1301 Algoma Boulevard. Our proposed project is for an open-sided pavilion or a large gazebo to be constructed on the grounds of the Oshkosh Public Museum. The probable site is between the existing public parking lot and the fence along Algoma Boulevard. This structure will be accessible and capable of accommodating 20 to 30 people. Its architecture will be consistent with the proximate historic buildings. After construction, the gazebo will be managed and maintained by the Oshkosh Public Museum. The Sawyer Payne Neighborhood is economically and ethnically diverse. It currently has no accessible public space suitable for neighborhood gatherings. We would like to create a neutral public space where neighbors can get together for meetings and/or social activities. This gazebo will also be available to school groups and other visitors to the museum as well as groups who have made out-of-hours arrangements with the museum. Our application to the Great Neighborhood Program is for funds for initial design work. It is anticipated this work will be done by Sacre Design Inc. in Madison, with whom the museum has worked successfully in the past. This initial design work will be used in an application to GOHNI for funds for detailed design work and actual construction. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further individuals registered to speak. We just want to mention what was in your folder for the record. And then I do have Stephanie, she's virtual, that when we get to item number 43, she's from the county to answer questions for you.
All right. Very good. So we have registered the email from Nikki Uhardy, the Winnebago County Health Department with a memo in support of reducing the fine. And that, okay, so that concludes our public comments. We'll move on to consent agenda. And I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on consent agenda items? Councilmember Ford?
I just want to point out quickly to the people who testified in item 19, that's part of the consent agenda, so if we do pass the consent agenda, that item is approved.
All right. Anyone else? Consent? All right. Please call the roll on consent agenda.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Borjehosky?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
We will move to pending ordinances, 21-443. Approve zone change from institutional district one, or I'm sorry, I think that's I, to institutional districts with a planned development overlay, IPD, for property located on the south 1,000 block of West Smith Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. They have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Borjehosky?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have several new ordinances. There will be no action on these items this evening. The first one is 21444, amend landmarks, commission ordinance to correct code references. The second one is 21445, amend ordinance for streets to remain open during course of excavation work to authorize the director of public works to approve closures necessary for emergency work or to allow for safe conditions for workers. 21446, amend ordinance 25104.2 to provide administrative process for variances for unusual conditions to be granted from the city's access control ordinance with appeal to plan commission. That was a mouthful and I probably will be asking some questions on that one to clarify. Ordinance 21447, amend ordinance for marijuana possession penalties for adults. This is, again, the This is, again, the first reading. And then twenty-one four forty-eight, amend building ordinance to correct administrative code reference. Do we have any discussion on any of these items that there will be no action on tonight? All right. We will move on to new resolutions, twenty-one four forty-nine. Approve twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six capital improvement plan. We have a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just want to point out a few things that are in the capital improvements plan. Budget is, you know, is a sign of what we care about in the city, a sign of our priorities. Capital improvement project reflects that. A couple highlights in here. We have on facilities, big money spent on our roofing replacement program and on ADA improvements on city buildings. I point that out because that demonstrates our commitment to maintenance, making sure things don't cost longer, or cost more in the long run, and making sure our public buildings are accessible. Police and fire, we have money in there to replace radios and to buy a new ambulance. Obviously, that's important for public safety. All kinds of good stuff on road construction, which is probably the number one thing that people come, at least to me, to complain about, is the quality of the roads. So it's nice to see we're doing something about those. Streets and sanitation, maybe not the most exciting things, but having money for new trucks that keeps our roads plowed, that keeps our garbage picked up. I swear I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I am going to keep going here. For the Parks Department, we have money in there, three million dollars for a new parks building. If you've been to the old building, it's basically an airport hangar, and it's in desperate need of repair. So really pleased to see that money in there. We have significant investments in our water. Obviously, we need clean drinking water. And then a whole bunch of funding for our parkland improvement, keeping our public spaces high-quality and accessible. You can go online and see where all this money is coming from, and I urge people to do so if you're curious. I know I get a lot of questions about, you know, how much money are we spending on this? Where's it coming from? I think that the CIP is pretty responsible. It keeps our debt under control, and I'm happy to have more discussion about this and pleased to support it in concept. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor, Mugerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Ford's statements down there. It's good to highlight what we're trying to do, the improvements we're trying to make for the community. And so I appreciate that he took the time to do that. One, he glanced over, he did talk about road construction, a mile stretch of Algoma Boulevard that is in desperate need of repair, is in the books for twenty-twenty-two. So that's a big thing. It's going to have a big impact on the community in terms of travel, but absolute necessity in terms of improving the road conditions in the campus area, as well as just a main thoroughfare. So I don't want to, I want to make sure every council member who wants to speak has a chance, but after anybody else, I'm going to make a suggestion that we lay this over, and I'll explain why when I do so. But this is the good of the community. This is what we're trying to do. These are the improvements we're trying to make. This isn't everything we'd like to do. No budget's perfect, no process is perfect, but our city staff does a phenomenal job of bringing us a plan that is financially reasonable and fiscally responsible. And we're going to try and take a big whack at some things in twenty-twenty-two. So that's all I got on this, unless somebody else wants to go.
And I'd just like to add on to the trail here, because I think it was the riveting radio show this morning about the CIP that probably got the new host lots of ratings, because I was excited about replacing ozone generators. Mr. Ravi here? Thank you. And if we have no further council inputs, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to lay this, the approval of, what is it? Twenty-one four four nine, over to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Yes, second.
Councilmember Ford, seconds. All right. Any discussion? Please, go ahead.
Yep. Just for an explanation as to why. A brief synopsis, the way the process works, city manager along with finance staff present to council a number that they think we might be comfortable with in terms of projects and debt and a plan. And this council saw fit to give them a little bit more leeway to, that we see some financial resources available to us, that it might be the right time to make some more investments in this community. And so we gave them a little bit more latitude in terms of some debt that we might be willing to take on. But council didn't have a real chance to talk about some of those pieces that got inserted into the capital improvements plan, at least in my opinion, didn't get a chance to discuss it enough. And I think it'd be appropriate for us to lay this over for a meeting. So we have an opportunity to give some more thoughts and/or properly word some possible amendments to keep the process clean and to make sure city manager and the finance staff, if we want to make some changes, know exactly what we want to make and to do appropriately. So that would be the reason for my move to lay it over, just for one meeting.
I'll be supporting that motion. Councilmember Ford?
I'd like to ask the Finance Director if laying this over would have any impact on implementation or on municipal finances.
While he comes up, can I just make a quick little add? Thank you, sir. The reason for it, it centers around just under three million dollars. That's the only part that, that, it's not that I have concern with it, but that I think council just needs to talk about more. Everything up till that, this council seems to have been fully on board with previously. But that's the reason for me in making the suggestion. So appreciate the extra few seconds, Councilmember Ford.
To answer your question, no, it does not. What we'd like to do, and the reason we set up our budget calendar, is we get a good feel for the projects that you're willing to tackle, and we can roll that into the operating budget, which we're hard at work preparing right now. So a two-week delay would be okay and acceptable, but it's just that whole process of taking those projects then and putting it into the operating budget. We would like your approval, you know, sooner than later, but I certainly understand.
Thank you.
Just one addition, and I agree with Mr. Van Campel. I talked to him this night, so the purpose of bringing this forward is primarily, at this time of year, is to get the Plan Commission to recommend adoption because it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. They've done that last week. So basically, the ball's in your court. It's a timing issue. If you wait two more weeks, that'll be fine for budget.
All right. And it does seem too that, you know, this year is kind of exciting. We've actually had, I think, more input from citizens on the budget process. You know, we heard from a couple folks tonight that were interested in how we prioritize some of the projects. We've heard from others. And certainly, you know, there may be some tweaking, as well as some additions. So I'll be supporting this motion to lay over for that purpose. Anyone else? All right. Please call the roll.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. Very good. Our next new resolution is twenty-one four five zero, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for property located on the south one-thousand block of West Smith Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Actually, not much discussion, just a comment for the school district staff and their consultant. What a fun and well-deserved improvement to the athletic facilities for the Oshkosh North student body, as well as any of the, any of the other user groups that get to use it. Just, you know, wasn't very long ago, it was long ago, but I'll just say it wasn't very long ago, when I was playing on some of those similar fields. And it's just, it's always nice to see school fields improved. In this particular case, kind of the cost of progress in terms of Yalos Humor Field and that access over there on Jackson at the New Merrill Site. But I'm excited for it. I'm happy for it. I'm happy to see, you know, just how you guys have been interacting with the neighbors and being a good partner over there. So just happy for the students that they get to have access to a high-caliber facility to do their athletics. So good for you guys.
Other council members? I'd just like to say that watching the Plan Commission, I really appreciated the effort by the Oshkosh area school district to incorporate and be somewhat flexible with some of those planning efforts. And we certainly welcome the opportunity for neighborhoods to have input on, you know, these decisions. I do have a question, if I may, for Councilmember Ford, though. It appears that several of the Plan Commission members were a bit concerned about some notices that didn't quite make it out. So I don't know if you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I mean, the people were concerned. City staff did say that the proper notices went out, and it did pass seven oh at Plan Commission. So those concerns were addressed.
All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. And next, we are at council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. Do any council members have future agenda items they'd like to suggest at this time that aren't already on the docket? All right. So we are at discussion of virtual meetings.
Madam Mayor, this was put on the agenda by staff to, with recent changes, putting the mask requirement back in city buildings. The issue was really, does council have any desire to do any changes with their meetings? Do they want to go back to virtual meetings? It's not that we're recommending it. We just wanted to make sure that if that was something you wanted to do, we would take your direction. That's really the purpose of the item on the agenda.
I do have a question. So how much extra work is it for us to move over into this space to accommodate?
Quite a bit.
How many hours of staff time does it take to set up?
It's more than just chairs. I think the technical issues are much greater. So Mr. Newman and some of his staff, Mr. Tim and some of his staff, as well as facilities. I don't have an exact number, but I would say it took probably at least half the day today for them to get everything set up properly. And Mr. Newman is saying higher.
Oh, I see some hand...
Yeah.
More than that.
And with all that preparation, we were still having some technical difficulties at the beginning of the meeting. It's a challenge, as it is for any situation like this.
All right. Other council members want to weigh in? Councilmember Bojehowski?
I guess this isn't, maybe this is just for us, I don't know, more information. DEI decided our next meeting will be virtual, so...
So DEI is going back to virtual?
I don't know if we're doing it permanently, or it was just made for that decision for our next, our upcoming meeting, so with that.
Other council member liaisons, if you want to share that as well, it'd be helpful. Councilmember Erickson?
For transit, I believe we just met recently, but I believe we're going to continue in-person. Rental Housing Advisory Board has been virtual and is, I believe, staying virtual for the convenience of it. I think my perspective on this, I'm comfortable meeting in-person for us, you know, now that masks are required again in city buildings. And I appreciate having the virtual option for people who are wanting to speak or just, you know, listen in. So I'm fine with staying in-person, but I appreciate having the space to talk about it, since things have been changing pretty quickly.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, Plan Commission did decide to go virtual. And just like Councilwoman Erickson, I think we need to stay in-person as a council. I think we've learned how to do it.
Deputy Mayor?
Sure, I'll chime in. No, I concur with my fellow colleagues, prefer to say exactly how we're doing it. We know hybrid is a challenge. I think that's an understatement, but also it's just point-blank, it's a challenge for city staff or for tech, not just for them, but, you know, we experienced it tonight. By making the move over here, it did create an accessibility issue for our residents. Now, it was temporary, hopefully, hopefully, you know, we've got it resolved, and we've learned for next time, and hopefully, we won't have that. I can trust city manager Roloff to, if he feels there's an agenda coming up that might warrant us sitting in this room versus city hall, then he has my confidence to make that call personally. But, so if we have to be here because there's an agenda topic that would warrant a large crowd, might be appropriate. But otherwise, city hall seems like a pretty comfortable spot for me to sit.
Councilmember Hanson?
Public arts and beautification is staying in-person.
And do you have a preference?
I prefer to stay in-person.
I'm sorry.
I prefer to stay in-person as well.
All right. Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, landmarks is staying in-person, and I think you guys have all said you're in favor of in-person, so that's fine with me. Thank you.
I appreciate all the council members giving their input. And I guess, you know, one of the things that I noticed in reading the municipality this month, there was an article by Kurt Witensky from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And what I took away from that, and it was about this very topic, and what you can do, what you should do, but bottom line, whatever you do, the recommendation that I took away from that was that we should at least have a policy. And I guess I'd kind of ask city attorney Lawrence, and if I could maybe last minute, put you on the spot here. Have you heard from other municipalities whether or not they're implementing a policy for the foreseeable future with regard to access for not just council members, but citizens and boards and commissions, virtual options?
Some of the municipalities have started looking at that. I think we were a little bit ahead of the curve already, bringing our revised policy to you. I actually have my conference next week, and I can bring it up there and see. I know that some of them were looking at ours, because they had not taken that next step yet.
Thank you. All right. So city manager, do you have your, what you need?
Thank you. You know, we'll continue, obviously, the in-person meetings with council. Everything at this time, because everything, you know, is subject to change, the numbers still haven't been improving. They aren't as bad as they were late last fall, but we'll keep an eye on those things. We're going to continue to have the mask requirement in place in city hall through October first. So that's the plan for the foreseeable future. And we'll probably have this on the agenda all the way through October first to keep everybody posted. And Oshkosh Media is putting information out, the departments are putting information out. So far, it's going okay.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is just a reminder placeholder for August thirty-first, noon to five. We still don't have a location for that, correct?
We do have a location. We were able to secure TJ's Harbor Restaurant, south of town. They will be ready for council for lunch at noon. And Mr. Fousky has indicated that we should be able to be done by four o'clock, so that council can hightail it back to city hall for the five o'clock workshop. And Diane will be sending you a reminder, so you have that, and if you need your GPS coordinates or the address to enter in your GPS.
Remind me, is TJ's in the city limits?
No, it is not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then the budget workshop, of course, at five o'clock. And our third and fourth budget workshops in October, just a reminder, those are full days. Eight, did we say eight or eight-thirty?
Eight, did we say eight or 8:30 start time for those in October?
8 o'clock is usually the start time.
All right, and discussion on non-renewal license fees.
Ms. Hubrig had provided a memo, and I guess if there's any questions, Ms. Hubrig's happy to answer them, get some direction from council. She made some recommendations, and I think she sent some other stuff out this afternoon just to do a little clarifying. Pam, is there anything to add?
No, but I'd be happy to answer questions of the council.
Looks like there were a couple of options in that memo. And if I understand correctly, you're looking for direction on which way we intend to go with that if one of those options is selected. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, what is your and your staff's preference? I mean, we want to make this easy for everybody, including staff. So, but I just want to make sure that if we're not kicking these people in the teeth twice. So, I mean, so tell me how you would prefer, you and your staff would prefer to see this work.
I feel that there should be no refund because there's enough time with our staff involved in these licenses that it quantifies the fee.
This is the first time I think I've ever disagreed with you in my entire life.
That's okay.
So, let me ask another question. What is your second best option?
My second option is, in the previous hearing, there was a discussion of $600. So, originally, if the applicant had filed on time, he would have paid $450. So, I don't feel that late fee or that new fee of $150 should be refunded because he was late. So if I take that off and we drop it to the original renewal fee of $450, I could agree with half of that being refunded.
And I can agree with that, so thank you for making me look not quite so bad.
It's okay, I can compromise.
So, I mean, if everybody agrees with that, I think that's very fair on our part and certainly on Pam's part.
Yes, I believe that one of the options was about considering a policy for a more specific notice, and that's what the recommendation was along with that, correct?
Correct. When we send out renewals, when we know of a business that's going to come forth with, they haven't used their license, that we would give them notice on a colored piece of paper, more direct that if you, realizing that if you do apply for this license, it's going to move forward with a hearing. And then they would have the option.
To remove it?
Correct.
Or withdraw, okay.
Right.
I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor, did you have something else?
Yeah, good question. If you're finished?
No, I'm finished.
Perfect. Pardon me, sorry. This afternoon, I communicated a little bit with City Attorney and City Clerk and the Deputy City Clerk on the topic, and just got some more clarification in terms of this topic. I appreciate that council last time saw the wisdom to just be patient on that topic. I was myself a little surprised, you know. We all learned that night that we don't refund that. It was just a surprise. I'm glad we didn't make an emotional decision that evening. I think that's, it's important to make sure that we're making rational and informed decisions. There are parts of this process that, there are steps within this process that applicants take that they may get their full refund real fast. That's correct. City Clerk Hubrig, basically, if they apply, first step is going to be, you know, is paperwork filled out correct? Except to, for a new application, you know, it's going to go through OPD. And maybe at that point, if there's a red flag, the process is over and they're going to get a refund. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. So there are steps at which point they do get a refund. So it is not all or nothing. That's good to learn. I think it's appropriate to make sure that city's time is also, city staff time is also not quote-unquote wasted with applications that aren't substantiated or at least able to be fulfilled. So that's a point that I think the City Clerk brought up as well in some communication. And then one final thing, Mr. Ford and I were actually having a discussion, and it kind of hit me earlier that, you know, during our TIF, TIF applications and TIF discussions, if a developer wants the city of Oshkosh to consider a TIF, they've got to write a $10,000 check. And we don't give that back if we deny that. That opened my eyes, that just, it reminded me to open my eyes a little bit in terms of the processes we use and to make sure we're fair throughout. So if we plan on making one change, we should have consideration for other parts of the processes that we have. We have some much other, larger expenses in the building area and the planning and zoning that we're not considering at the moment, too. So, just make an informed decision, I think, is all I'm asking council to do. I'm still on the fence myself. I can see a reason why. But there's a lot of other ones, a lot of other fees and applications that we take in that we don't refund that are even bigger expenses. So, consider those things as well.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'm okay with the compromise that Councilman Miller brought up. I think the larger issue here is also a public education effort that as we continue to go down this process for non-renewal of licenses that aren't being used, we need to educate individuals that own these licenses. Let them know that if you're going to apply or to renew a license that you're not actually going to use, you have to expect you're not going to, we're going to take that back as a matter of being consistent with different businesses. So I think the best way to avoid having the discussion about whether we have to refund a fee like this is to make sure people understand the rules going in.
And Pam, when the packets are given out, all of that is spelled out clearly in there, is it not? That that's the potential for the non-renewal in that packet? So what you're proposing is an additional letter when that situation applies?
Correct. When we mail out the renewal packets, that information is included in there. But I feel that we can do a better job in those couple licenses that are coming up that we really put bullet points for them so that it stands out right on top so when they open it that they see it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Is that what you need?
Well, with that direction, we would be providing a $450 refund of brass rail, as well as the other ones that council had rejected back in late June. So that's, I mean, we can certainly do that. But I think Deputy Mayor Muglerauer's point is well-taken. We've had zoning requests that people have paid hundreds of dollars for. We reject them, and we don't refund it because we go through a big process. We don't, didn't go through as elaborate a process with brass rail because there was no need to do some of the other inspections. But we'll certainly honor that. But I think Deputy Mayor Muglerauer's statement is something to, food for thought as we proceed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Thanks for all the legwork.
You're welcome.
It took me a while to get through that one. That was very thorough, thank you. All right, council member announcements and statements, liaison for boards and commissions. Anything to report? All right. Follow-up to Convention and Visitors Bureau Destination Assessment. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll be quick on this one, but I put it on there because we had that great presentation a few meetings back, really focusing on the things we can do to make Oshkosh more attractive to visitors. It strikes me that those same things that make Oshkosh attractive to visitors also improve the quality of life for residents who live here. And I really hope that we're able to drill down what are the most important recommendations from that process, identify any barriers that might exist in code implementing those. Because just a cursory glance, some of those recommendations would be code violations, that we make these appropriate changes as a package that really highlights, has some cohesiveness to what we're trying to do to improve the quality of life in Oshkosh. So my really, my question here for my colleagues is whether or not you see value in adding this to our outstanding issue list? They have something that, long-term, we pursue implementing?
I would certainly support that.
Does that work for you, City Manager Roloff, adding that to the list?
Jotted it down, so yeah, I got it.
Awesome, thank you.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and I know Ms. Nyforth has already been following through with many of the, at least the easy ones. The ones that cost a lot of money, not so easy. But the ones that are regulatory in nature, Kelly's been working very closely with CVB and some other folks to see what we can do to get those done. So there were some good ideas out there.
And I guess I'd just like to ask, too, and maybe you've said this, but it's a little muffled echoing back here, so when we do put that on the outstanding issues, could we maybe get a little more specific on what those items are? Because there tends to be a lot of social media, like rumors blowing up about, you know, some of those items. And that's great that it's getting the visibility, but just, it would be helpful, I think, for us to know what is actually being worked on from our end.
One of the advantages of putting it on outstanding issues is, you know, we can give a little blurb in that, but.
And in the newsletter, right?
It really, it really kind of forces us to have a little oral report ready, and happy to do that.
Can't hear me down here, Madam Mayor? I'm on the south side. No, the reason I wanted to keep it a little vague there is that I imagine there's going, I mean, there's a heck of a lot in that report. I imagine it's going to take some time to really identify those barriers. So, that was at least my intent.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're at City Manager Announcements and Statements.
Well, the first item that I want to announce, it's not listed here, but I think it would, I don't think the City Attorney will be too mad at me for making the statement. The sign next to Ms. Nyforth that says interim Community Development Director, the memo didn't get down to our facilities, folks. Ms. Nyforth is now officially our permanent Community Development Director. So I want to congratulate Kelly publicly, and please, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So she was given good direction to her staff here tonight, so they're already following the new boss. So she'll do just fine.
Thank you very much.
With respect to the other items in the packet, there's a memo getting ready for the 2022 capital improvements, the geotechnical services explorations. That's usually something we get started this time of the year. I don't, because I was gone last week, I really don't have an ARPA funding update for you. But there's, before I left, I was reviewing some of the applications. And I think one of the advantages of doing it the way we're doing it, I saw some opportunities for collaboration with some of the various applicants. And I'm going to be talking to some of those folks because I, and I think I had said this during some of the sessions that we had, this wasn't an all-or-nothing type of application. I saw several organizations say, oh, we'll work with Group X and Y. So I wanted to see if we can maybe start talking, even before we do anything, what collaborations can get done. And I think there's some great opportunities for that. So that's going to be working on over the next few weeks. Mr. Van Gompo has provided you with the second quarter general fund revenue and expense report. We're actually doing about the same as last year, which was a very good year. You'll get more details at Tuesday's, next Tuesday's budget workshop. But we're on track with everything for the year. Biggest thing you can say at this time of year is there's no surprises. So that's always a good thing. I can certainly answer any questions you have about the outstanding issues. And I don't have a COVID update for this evening. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, are there any particular items on the outstanding issues that? We have a couple that were dated for this evening. Is there anything specific you wanted to highlight?
Sure, the, probably the one that I want to point out is the, excuse me, my glasses are fogging up. The facility study, the ADA assessment, there was a question I received. We're in the process of getting that complete, and we'll bring the facility studies back once that ADA report is out there. I think there was a thought that we were going to be doing something with the CIP relative to that. That was not our intent. By the time the council approves the budget for, the CIP budget, the actual budget in November, you'll have a pretty good feel for what some of those facility needs may be. If there's anything else, Madam Mayor, happy to address those as well.
So then we're continuing to get information on the, from R.A. Smith on special assessment discussion?
Yes, and we've met with R.A. Smith. I think we're, you know, we're going to be in a position where I think we can show you what an estimated residential cost will be, and then how we project it'll be for businesses and multifamily and things like that. That takes a little more work. That does require the council to give us some authorization to essentially designate R.A. Smith as a designated agent of the city that can look at utility bills. Right now, to make, to give a true estimate to somebody, we can give an estimate right now, but to give them an idea of what your bill actually would be, we need to be able to give them the ability to go in and how you can slice those bills a little differently. It depends on how the utility bill is created, because remember, the utility bill is right now created for water sewer and storm sewer. Some of those have meters, water does, sewer and stormwater don't, either would transportation. That takes some other work that needs to get done. So we're working on that, and we'll probably be ready to present you with some information and probably plan a workshop in the very near future.
And I'm sorry, you said there's nothing for COVID-19 update tonight?
I don't have an update other than what I said earlier. The numbers are still going up. I know Mr. Guerin is keeping an eye on those, and I think that's why we put the mask order back in place in city buildings.
Mr. Robby, I see you're still here. What about those sewer samples? Are those still trending upward like we were seeing two weeks ago? The predictive factors?
I have not seen an update from my staff in the last week and a half, but the last results that they did have did have an upward trend to them.
All right, thank you. I guess I'd just share some of the news that came out yesterday. That Governor Evers announced an incentive, $100 for those folks watching at home for anyone who received a first dose vaccination from August 20th through September 6th. And I'm sure you can find more information on vaccines.gov.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.